States of America, and to the people who voted for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
And you say we have to do some of the arrangements, right?
Yes, we had scheduled, um, set dates for public hearings on proposed general obligation notes for LEC remuneration, and that's gonna be delayed a week.
All right. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, I-
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the agenda with a correction.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Miss from the previous meeting on three, two, uh, fifteen.
Move reapproved.
I'll second.
All those in favor, including the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Do we have anybody in the public that'd like to speak this morning? Maybe it's- All right. Kathy, I guess you're front and center. Kathy, your age.
Yeah, well, it's been a while. I, I think everybody's received a copy of, uh, County Social Services Sharing Resolution, and we've talked somewhat about this off and on over at least the past year about county social services, um, managing, um, the care coordination and targeted case management programs, or making that an option for, um, any of the counties within the region, and they are now ready to move forward with that and begin, um, management of a regional targeted case management program effective April first. And so, the County Social Services Board, um, approved that resolution for all of the counties within the county social services region, and had asked for review from each of the individual county boards, um, in regard to their, um, interest in doing that, so... Basically, it just really means that CSS will take over the management, um, and, and direct responsibility for the operation of the program. Humboldt County agrees to continue to, um, provide the, the staff, according to the FTEs that are listed, which, which would be consistent with, um, our current staffing pattern. Um, they did include mental health advocate, 'cause it's my understanding that there is some legislation that may change how the mental health advocate is, um, handled, but to my knowledge, that hasn't passed.
Hasn't passed.
Hasn't passed, so, but that is inclusive in there, in the event that it does, so...
So, who's gonna do the, what CCM issues to do then? How is that gonna be handled?
Um, they will, will look to regional resources to do that. I don't think they'll look to county, um, ISAC County Case Management Services to provide that. They will probably delegate, um, some of that to the individual county, whoever is designated as the coordinator of Disability Service in each county, which would be myself for Humboldt County, um, you know, to do the direct supervision of the employees who are employed by that county, and the county retains the right, you know, the ultimate right and responsibility to hire, fire discipline and all those things.
Will the region be a member of CCMs?
Not to my knowledge.
Are there any counties left in the membership of that now?
You know, we've really gotten out of the loop on that, because Humboldt County's been out for, for quite a while, so...
No.
Yeah, yeah. Part, part of, you know, what's driving this, and we've talked about that before, you know, back in February, um, the state issued a request for proposal for the Managed Care of Medicaid, which, you know, is a, a very, very big scope. I mean, I, the numbers that I've seen are, you know, three point five and four billion, you know, in Medicaid programs, and that process is underway with the intent of implementation by January of sixteen, so it's, it's gonna move along pretty rapidly, and we know that that will encompass, um, care coordination in some form, and so it's gonna be very hard for small programs, I think, down, down the road, in, in light of those changes, to really, um, be effective and have a chance to, to sustain in that type of environment, so...
So, is your group bidding on that, or not?
Um, no.
No.
County Social Services isn't qualified to do that. You have to be, I believe, like, an HMO.
That's it.
To do that, they'll award between two and four contracts statewide, I believe, but whoever's selected has the ability to, you know, subcontract for different components of the-
Who would you say would be one of those two or three groups? Got any idea? I'm just guessing a little bit, but-
Um, you know, yeah, I really, I really don't, because, I mean, these could be entities from anywhere in the nation, really.
Outside of state, yeah, that's just it. It could open it up, wouldn't it?
Yeah, they've had a number of, um, you know, a number of these entities present information, you know, to state.
If they're all gonna be large scale, they're not gonna, they're gonna be pretty large scale.
Is that something with Jones would do?
Right.
That's what I wondered, would it be with Jones?
Doing a lot of that stuff.
Jones currently doing medical health.
Yeah.
Correct, so, yeah, so this would just, I mean, this is a much bigger, bigger scope, so...
Bigger than that.
Oh, yeah, a lot bigger than that.
I would say this, in what I, in my experience with McJones, basically through CFR and, and the mental health side, and, and I know, we've gone through some improvements and changes, but I tell you what, getting those report, you know, what are those are called? Report, um, cost estimates, I guess I'm gonna call them for not a better word, but to get them and get them detailed right, they don't make mistakes, 'cause we're usually like, two thousand and eleven, I think we just got cleaned up, we're, we're two, three years behind in getting paid on some of that stuff, because they'll send out a whole list of questions if they want things looked redocumented, and the answers to questions, and it just, it takes a long time through a large company like that to get your payments back, but that being said, what are you gonna do if that's the one they award the contract to?
Right, and, and that, I mean, right now, the proposed timeline for that, I believe there's, um, a series of question and answer periods for interested entities, um, that goes maybe through May, and then I think by July, the end of July, um, is the intent to, to select, um, so, so, you know, I'm sure there'll be a lot more coming out over the next four, five, six months in regard to that, and so as we get information, I can, um, make sure the board's aware of, of those things, so...
Very good. I assume we need to have to approve this resolution to allow the board to-
Right.
Okay. Motion by Harland to approve the relation, resolution, two, one, five, seven.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on this merger proposal? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried.
Peggy, since you only want him to sign?
This is the original, Peggy.
Okay.
Is there anything going on with the legislature that's gonna affect your organization, or anything?
There's always this. I, I think honestly, the biggest thing is the, um, this Medicaid Managed Care, um, because of the vastness of the scope of that, and we know that the care coordination and case management will be a part of that, we just don't know what that's gonna look like, you know, so we just continue to operate.
You know, Harland, we got this last week, this infomap, there's really good articles in here about what's going on down there. We've been getting this kind of regularly lately, of course, it's in session, but there's a whole thing on managed healthcare, or managed, um, Medicaid, yeah, managed, it's kinda interesting.
Yeah.
It's not easy to always understand what the process is, but it's, it's going on.
Do you hear me? I'm hearing what's happening this year.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. We got a couple minutes here before the public hearings.
We need to place an engagement letter.
I'll tell you what to do, then. Um, we have a couple minutes here, let's go down to the bottom here, I guess there's the, authorize chairman to sign the engagement letter with David Davidson, a company, this would be for, what's on the LEC?
Yes, and this was sent by Mike Maloney. He said in order for them to provide services that they will be providing for us, they need an engagement letter. He said it's their standard format, um, that they use. I could send it up to the county attorney, I didn't, but I could be glad to.
Forward.
Looks pretty-
That's a good conversation on the future resource.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's their standard agreements.
I entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the engagement letter.
I'll make the motion to assign the engagement letter. DA Davidson.
Second. Motion by Harland. Any other discussion?
I see, uh, the foundation, or whatever, approved ten thousand dollars for the LEC.
Yeah.
That'll help, Rick. I'll put that on here. Check that out.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Authorize the chairman to sign the engagement letter. Hearing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. I think we're at the hour of working on the county's budget. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move.
Motion by Moore.
I'll second.
Second by Jerry. Okay, we're open. All those in favor for the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Okay, any discussion on this budget, published in the paper? Anything else we need to add here, Peggy?
Um, no, nothing to add. I did have some things for the press, so, I've got three of these that have, or notice that appeared in the paper, as well as, um, the county board's recommendations, in case they didn't have them.
Two.
It was only two, I'm sorry, I guess I only have two. I'll have to-
One, does he need it?
No, he's got one.
He's got one, all right.
Yep, and then there's also-
I forgot the three of you.
These were passed out at the Farm Bureau meeting that we got, uh, a few weeks ago, and those of you that didn't have them, if you wanna keep one, Carl, and Carl, who's there, keep a topic, no, these are, you can take one of each one.
One on each to press.
Yeah, then I'll have to press this.
All right. Let's see, we get-
They're two different ones. Um, and then also, we gave them a detailed breakdown of what our expenses were. I'm gonna hand that down now. Who else was it? There, was it just Carl?
Harland, probably was.
Okay, and then we'll handle it. Um, budget, listen to a lot of changes this year. Um, we were trying to have our hands tied on a lot of things that we could do. Um, we're levying, oops, that's not the one I was looking for. Let's see what my budget papers are here. We looked at several different things to try, and to, um, lowering levies, and we were able to lower, um, one levy, a little bit, mental health went down. Um, last year, our general basic levy was three ninety, this year it's three eighty. Um, we're still above the three fifty. We published the extra notice in the newspaper, we're required to, um, due to the, let's see, I think it was oh five, oh six, when we went down in value so much, and we're still trying to recover from that. It took quite a bit to get our valuations back up again. Um, general supplemental was dollar forty last year, went up to a dollar fifty this year. Mental health was roughly seventy-five cents last year, and it's fifty-eight cents this year. Rural services was at three ninety-five last year, and three ninety-five this year. So, we're down about eight, seventeen and a half cents. Um, it was, it's ten, it was ten dollars total last year, and it was nine eighty-three when you write it off for next year proposed. So, and-
How's the full bit with the assessed valuation?
Yeah, yeah, valuation went up a little bit, and that helped. Um, the graphs show you where the money, uh, expenses go. Um, public safety, of course, is a big part of it, roads and transportation's a big part of it. Um, tried to make the colors stand out. Carl, did you get a copy of that at all? Okay, is there any extra copies from that?
Over there.
Okay, I'll make sure you get one, um, 'cause I got my notes written over on this one, and the guy's got them at the Farm Bureau meeting. So, um, transfers is a big part. We transfer money out of general basic and rural services into secondary roads, so that they can do function the way that they need to. So, it just kinda shows you where the money's going. The revenues, I did the same thing on the revenue side. Um, of course, the main share of our revenues, property tax revenues, um, then the rest is intergovernmental, that's the next big share. Um, intergovernmental would consist of your tax replacement monies, uh, strengthen my sheet, they have my numbers on it, and I can tell ya, those type of things. Things from other good ones. Yeah, okay, whatever, though. Um, can I find the exact sheet I'm looking for, darn it?
You don't fill money in? He goes like, no.
Yeah, there it is.
Money.
It's gonna pass from over there.
So, you plug in the revenues for the ten cent gas entry?
No.
So, that's not in the budget?
That's not in that.
Which is what, four hundred?
You're allowed, I figured we'd take care of that once we do a budget amendment, and that's fair, because we don't know yet what we're gonna get. I mean, it'd be hard to estimate at this time.
You better-
When we have a lot of traffic, a lot of, yeah, we may not have any, so... Same thing with, um, when we proposed the budget, we, at that time, thought we were gonna have a three point six, three, roughly, increase in our insurance rates for employee insurance. The board was able to get that down to a zero increase by using some of our balance within our partial stop funding. So, I didn't wanna go in and change every single budget in there. Um, I think it's easier just to approve the budget as it is, go in and make it a budget amendment after the first, or after July sometime, and then clean it up then.
At least it was a direction in the right, a fun direction.
Right, right. It's better, I think, to have a little bit too much in there than to not have enough and try to, um, find some money to cover it if we have, if it's not enough in there, so... And it's hard when the insurance company doesn't negotiate with you until later in the year, when you're already past the point of getting everything published and everything done, so, makes it a little tougher. So, otherwise, no, um, really big changes. I, I put the increases in there, um, according to what the union negotiated, um, and then what the county board recommended for the, um, office, so...
Are there comments from visitors concerning our budget? They're published in the papers, I think. Hearing now, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Harland.
I just wanna make a comment about the general basic levy. We're getting that back down-
Yeah.
To what is it? Supposed to be three seven five, the max?
Three fifty.
Three five.
Three fifty, so we're still point three over, but we're going in the right direction, so...
Yeah, you've been working at it, as you've been able to-
Back to Harland, since we've been on, or, you know, I think we were at four and a quarter at one time, so we've come down.
Yeah, a lot of times, every year, we bring it down a little.
Didn't that seem right, Peggy, maybe four and a quarter at one time?
Yeah, it was.
It worries me now with the productivity formula, it's slipped back again.
Yeah, valuation, it's slowing down.
Five percent, Linda said.
Well, Linda said Humboldt County was one of the lowest productive, production counties last year, last year.
Yeah, our county averaged one thousand.
Yeah.
Due to our, our weather issues we've had.
Before we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Okay, part of the budget, we need to go ahead and approve the recommendation from the compensation board, um, with regard to-
Salary?
Salary, all of the-
I see that somewhere in here.
It's gonna make two amendments, no, and it's-
The reason you did this at your budget hearing is because Iowa code says that you shall approve. When the county board came and presented it to you, um, you just accepted it and placed it on file, and then the code says you should accept it at your budget hearing, so...
And that becomes part of the budget, then? In discussion on the compensation board recommendations, I think we've discussed this before. Anybody else got comments concerning? I would entertain a motion to approve the compensation board recommendation, when that is printed.
I'll make the motion to approve the compensation board's recommendations.
Second by Jerry. Other discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of the compensation board recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Okay, we're down to, uh, approving the budget, which is in the form of resolutions in two thousand fifteen, eight, six. Resolutions approving the two thousand fifteen, sixteen county budget. By Harland. Second by Moore. Discussion on the resolutions, that we've been discussing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Budget is approved. Okay, do we need to wait to nine o'clock on the council votes?
Probably should, in case anyone wants to show up.
Uh, let's see, well-
We have approved claims yet?
We've, uh, approved the claims.
I agree with claims, and I believe we have claims of a hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, and no drainage this month.
No drainage.
No.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Jerry, second by Harland to approve claims. Any discussion on that, on the absence of drainage? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Okay, I think we could probably sneak any committee reports here before, anything new? You do, Jerry?
Yeah, I was thinking we did one thing last week, but I don't have it written in my book, so I'm gonna pass right now, so, take a bother.
Have the conference.
Hey, you know, we had, we had a conference, we had, uh, Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
At seven. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, that's the only thing I had also. I missed it, Carl.
Oh, you get from that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Carl, Mark. I think we had LEC, we just went to the budget, and then we bought our own placemats, rather than, uh, keep paying for them to come up and save us some other time.
Oh, formats?
Format.
Oh, I did wonder, but you haven't mentioned it. But, uh, I had to wait about that one minute.
I knew I could knock him out. Otherwise, I, um, and then, uh, we had, uh, compensation board on Wednesday, I guess, wasn't it?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, seven o'clock.
Tuesday, the third?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what's working, thank you.
Was it Wednesday? Was it Wednesday? No, Wednesday was much more, that was much more, it's the fourth.
You've got that off of there.
Okay, I had, uh, IDDA meeting in Pocahontas Wednesday, uh, I guess the, the main thing there was, uh, the pipeline information, uh, keep in comment with, uh, the railroad people and John Torbert down in Des Moines talking about it, and, uh, they want, uh, our attorney to come up with, uh, kind of a general regulations on crossings, road crossings, just kind of normal specs. They wanna go four foot deep, he said he wanted them to go six foot, but they said that'd be too expensive, and, uh, as far as, uh, tile crossings and so forth, apparently, they can bend that pipe, so they can come along, bend it for down, back up.
Oh, I suppose.
So, uh, so, uh, they don't wanna do much of that, do they?
I bet you they'll bend it to the three foot side.
And, let's see, what else? Uh, they did talk a little bit about the railroad, I guess there's a bill down in the house about the, uh, insurance requirements and so forth, where IPAC, here, yeah, is that right, our insurance carrier? ICAP or?
ICAP.
Is, uh, gonna take care of that, so the counties don't have to, you know, have this large, uh, insurance, if they work in the railroad right away. Uh, and then we talked about the Des Moines Water Works tomorrow, or is the tenth, I think, is their sixty day-
Piling window.
Piling, but they said they were gonna file. So, uh, we, IDDA has got two choices. One is to be, what do you call it, amicus, where you can, like we did with the Kelvin County case and the Monona County case, where we were a friend of the court as far as sending in information, and, uh, or we can be an active participant. Uh, our attorney, Doug Strites, said, well, if you're gonna just be a friend of the court type deal, it'll cost us about fifty thousand, and if we wanna go be a part of it, you're talking two hundred thousand, so, uh... The board felt that they, this is important enough for drainage in Iowa, that they wanted to be a part of the case, so if they file tomorrow or Wednesday, uh, we're gonna send out a letter to all the counties that have drainage and ask them if they would contribute five thousand dollars apiece, or, uh, helps put the cost of this.
So, then that would come out of what fund, the five thousand?
We got a litigation fund.
Okay.
Uh, no, I can't think of the county, the supervisor in Kelvin County, can't think of the name now.
Not Dean?
No, the, the young guy.
Oh, uh, Scott, 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 Scott Jacob.
They had a, uh, a meeting that afternoon with their attorneys and so forth, and they were gonna hire an outfit out of DC that does a lot of work with, uh, the EPA, and also thinking about, uh, law firm in Des Moines, so it's, so who's gonna head it up? I don't know, I think they wanted Des Moines to do a lot more of the legwork, and he'll be kinda reviewing the process.
Reviewing and helping out, so, um, hopefully, uh, it won't happen.
My personal opinion is, I don't think it will happen. I think they got the publicity they wanted, and, 'cause, uh, it's gonna cost them money too, big time, if they're gonna proceed with this, so, we'll have to wait and see.
Something about a counter suit? Maybe a water work, too? Maybe that'd be a rule, I don't know, like, two.
Put them back in the water, I suppose. So, we'll have to wait and see. Should know in a day or two what happened. That's all I have.
So, then, I guess, if, to clear for the public, if we would, if it would go forward, we put in five thousand dollars, that would come from all drainage districts, we pay a portion of that, five thousand to fund that.
Well, we thought about, uh, three cent levy, Pitzer's, Paul Kaker, or five cent levy, uh, Stan Want, it was, uh, a big pusher, this, to go with like five thousand for three years to come up with the money.
Yeah.
'Cause it is important for drainage, you know, and, you know, part of the, the problem is, it, it kinda blows my mind, is the soybean association had been doing the water testing there, and they're kinda, I don't understand, that's the way I get it, they're kinda in helping the water works with their information. The corn growers and the Farm Bureau are stepping up, that they wanna really support drainage, so I, I, I don't get the, the bed partners there, I don't understand it. The soybeans put nitrates into the soil.
Yeah.
Do you think, do you think the soybean association has good accurate records that they think will help, or do-
Well, I know they've been doing a lot of, I've done a little bit of testing with them, I don't, you know, it's, it's kinda in a group setting, you know, you don't, they don't individually rec, I mean, go out and identify your information, but they group it together, it would maybe have some merit that would help support our case, possibly, yeah, I don't know. I can't see them being against the agriculture end of it, so...
You wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
Good question, five thousand dollars. If we lose that lawsuit, if we, the drainage districts are the ones that's gonna have to pay the bill, rather than the county per se, and who's paying the five thousand dollars to county per se or the drainage districts?
That's what I was wanting, I mean, we'll, we're gonna have to assess-
You're gonna have to see how you do it.
Like we do our membership, or whatever, we'll have to assess every drainage district a small portion.
Hope they don't file.
So, uh... Well, uh, like the Sioux County, they figure, their whole county's drainage, so they just take it out of their, uh, general fund. Uh, I think we used to do that, in fact, didn't we, Peggy?
I remember, take it out of general fund, unless it's been, I might-
Or did we take it out of the supervisors, or, did we always assess it per acre?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We got sued, the supervisor first, we wouldn't extend those, it'd be the districts that, you know, we're, just because we're, uh, ministers of the district, we won't personally be sued, I don't think, would we? The money comes out of drainage districts. They're liable.
You're talking about for who? For Kelvin County, for example?
Uh, Kelvin, Sack and, you know, Vista County. If that suit goes through and they pick up, they have to pay damages, that damage is gonna come from each drainage district rather than from the county.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what's really crazy about it. 'Cause basically the Des Moines Water Works is suing a handful of farmers up there. Bob's got a-
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I don't think it's money. I don't think that's what he's after. I think what he's really after is you have point source and non-point source. He wants to label water coming out of tile, point source. All he wants to do is say that. He doesn't want any money from Kelvin, BV, Sack. All he wants to do is make sure that water coming into this river is point source. Then EPA, DNR can come back and regulate that water.
They can do all-
Under point source.
Yeah, there's the point. But there's no provisions in Iowa code.
EPA makes their own rules. You know that.
Well, right now, I mean, there's no provisions to do that. So there's, somehow they're gonna have to come up with the rule.
That's right. But I think the whole thing, point, point source, line of point source.
In that being said, that would keep their, uh, legal costs down. It would just open the big battle to the level that they wanna see it where the federal would have the dollars.
My opinion.
I mean, that's, it's, that's one of those thoughts.
They have a lot of their plan on her, by the way. Me and her, you'd have an old treatment plan too, by the way. Yeah. I don't know. I, you know, you look at Chesapeake Bay, they tried for ten, fifteen years out there to drop, to do all these things. And they've done about everything they can out there to drop their nitrate and phosphate coming out and they still aren't doing it, you know? Organic matter in the swell produces nitrogen, which, which goes down into the top line. So.
Yeah.
Years ago. Sorry, they did that study of Pocahontas, they proved that years ago. Twenty years ago.
Yeah, out there they had drainage ball study to have up. They got more city out there. Their rock ground was the worst nitrogen contamination than anything else.
Okay, we got one more time here. It was Harland's fault. Maybe give my report real fast and we know. Thank you. Wednesday morning, then with the architects and the workers trying to work with the racquetball company getting his warning sent kicked off. They're still in process of working. Then Wednesday evening, we had a budget hearing, a budget proposal approval for nine one one from the conference board. On Thursday, I went to Des Moines. Sister Andre's got the entrepreneur of the year award and she was able to receive a award from the governor and got to be recognized in legislature. Kind of a big honor for a little business like that. It started out with nothing and ended up making forty thousand miles a, forty thousand meals a, a month.
Yeah.
And I think she'd been nominated for national, but we'll see how that goes. And then on Friday, went down to Fort Dodge again. We had the governor there to designate Homeboy County of the home base Iowa. I think we're one of the five counties that got recognized in. Green County got started. So it's kind of an honor. And you probably read about it in the paper, some of the, the incentives we give to get revenues come back to Des Moines County and working our county. Okay, that was it Peggy.
Okay.
It's time to canvas a vote. We need a motion to recess and abort canvas. Second by Harland, second by Moore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye. Okay, we had an election here last Tuesday Peggy. We gotta go through the ballots.
We should get. This will be an easy one for you. We only have two, um, telling us.
Rick step up to the mic.
Okay.
These guys are rough.
There's a tape inside the- You can't look for it?
Yep.
And we'll do three yes and no's before we tell you what precincts you have.
Okay. I guess I'm starting here and it looks like I have, what do I have Peggy?
You have the Humboldt precinct.
I guess I just have the Humboldt in a special election. And I have yes votes of one forty-four and no votes of sixty-three.
Okay.
And I says precinct twenty.
So you are the absentee.
Okay, and I got two yes and seven no.
Okay. Biggest canvas you ever had.
Yes, it is.
Do we need a motion?
I'll let you guys do the general.
The total score would be yes, one forty-six and no, seventy. Um, this was about a five percent turnout of all the registered voters in the city of Humboldt, so.
Do we need a motion to certify that the revolution didn't pass? One forty-six and seventy.
Uh, make that motion.
Motion by Rick.
I'll second it.
And by Jerry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye. Motion carried. Paul Jacobson, you're on board.
The second you have to-
We've got a recess.
We're gonna go to read, read.
Uh, make a motion.
You can lead.
Read, read.
You can lead.
Yeah. Motion by Rick, second by Jerry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye.
There we go.
Welcome. Good morning, Paul.
Mr. Chair, I'm a little early.
That's right.
Believe that, we're a little early. You can just stick around here though. Break that down, we're a little early, good morning. How are you getting along there Dean?
Well, it's a little tender, yeah.
Normal shoes?
Nice, well, yeah. It's still tender. Gotta take time.
It's one way to slow you down.
We've got two signs here, Mark.
According to the, uh, uh, one order of businesses to endorse, endorse and authorize an application for regional surface transportation funding. Uh, what I included in your packet is our application. Our standard application for the tip, uh, is, uh, what everybody must submit. And, and even though every year we do a, a budget with a five-year plan, we still have to get an endorsement from you for a project, uh, a paving project that we're proposing with this application. And the reason being is many of the entities that apply for money for trails or for whatever through the region may not have the formal approvals and the commitments that you already have. But, uh, uh, that's why we have, uh, to get a formal endorsement now. And then once you approve the five-year plan, you'll be, in essence, endorsing the same thing. And what this application is, is a project for paving that we're looking at, uh, two thousand nineteen, summer of two thousand nineteen, paving. Total cost of the project is, uh, the best guess at this point is a million four. And we're applying for a million dollars worth of STP or the federal aid funding for it. And this project is to pave the road between, uh, C twenty and Rutland. Uh, the, uh, what we call the border Rutland Blacktop. It is officially, it's, uh, uh, P thirty-three between C twenty-six and, uh, C twenty-nine. Excuse me, C twenty and C twenty-nine. Approximately seven miles. Uh, plans I noted the last day or so are seven point one miles on it. But, uh, uh, we have an application for seven miles. And we've written the narrative to be either concrete or asphalt, whatever will work at the time.
Prices change a lot in four years, right?
Who knows? Um, this gives us the flexibility. Uh, as we get closer to that time, we can amend these application with the step ahead of time if the project scope needs to change or if we need to add or take away dollars. Uh, we can easily add, uh, in two thousand nineteen, what you'll see with a five-year program is we're also looking at trying to pave, uh, the Badger Blacktop from Thor Blacktop South, that three miles. So if things happen and, and oil goes down and this becomes more, uh, say we can get, uh, adequate, uh, funding for a hundred and fifty thousand a mile is the construction cost, we'll turn around and add more to it. So we still utilize the million dollar, uh, federal aid.
Let me just kinda open the door.
This is, uh, this is part of the, uh, let's see, I gotta use a politically correct term here. Uh, process, uh, of federal aid funding. You on a local level can look at, you plan five years out and each year you look at that again and you do whatever's best for you every year. With this federal aid stuff, we have to look out four years and, and get the app in and then, uh, then you can tweak it after you get approval with the regional.
How soon would that be, Paul? Any idea as to when the feds would act on this?
Oh, the feds officially, it's in the TAC. It would be, we'll send it in. Our applications are due at the end of this month, I believe. Uh, and ultimately they're in the TAC, which is approved in, what, July, Harland. Uh, when you look at MITS summer. The whole, uh, the whole transit, uh, all of everything puts in the same package. I believe it's July, table on it. Uh, but we have applications due on our end so that we can still meet our DOT commitments of April fifteenth. So we have to get this running, approved, and we'll have meetings, uh, in the end of March, uh, on the TAC or the advisory committee to get it to the full, uh, MITS board, uh, following.
So the feds, have they funded this in their new budget? Do we?
No.
They're gonna do the big talk, what, last year? We're gonna get this clip or they didn't have any funds?
Fiscal.
Has that been sold or is that still hanging out there?
No, we keep working on extensions. There is no program out there that would-
It's not like the fine bill, they finally went out, what, five or six years?
Nope.
The feds haven't done that yet.
In our hope, my sincere hope, is that we can do a, a, a transfer or a, uh, exchange and let the state deal with the federal funds and let the counties deal with local funds.
And we could do- Lose the savings by doing that, isn't there?
Yeah, because we don't have to do any of this if we were truly on our own, I mean, for one. Uh, and the flexibilities, the requirements and, and all of the-
Well, if this is a fed project, is that minimum wage thing, is all of that fall into this?
Absolutely.
True, true.
Uh, and, and all of the requirements from Fed Aid, all of the, yeah. It's, uh, it's cumbersome but it's the game we play and we're starting the game right today, uh, trying to get a, a Fed Aid project for two thousand nineteen for Humboldt County. And hopefully, uh, the, uh, that we have an exchange or something and, and we can start streamlining some of this. Because, uh, bang for the buck comes locally, you raise the money and rebuild the road. And that's it. Uh, without all of the BS in between.
Well, personally, after we put in the rag plate, Bradgate Whitetop and the Thor Whitetop and then we've done the Blacktop over the Lake Church, man, I would spend the difference for a Whitetop. For the little bit of difference in cost here, man, there's no comparison.
And who knows?
And for the quality of road you get when you're done.
Unless you have a base to do the kind of- You don't, you save all that cracked building then?
That's right. And you don't, first, you drag down the road, you don't go thump, thump, thump like you do after a few years on Blacktop. My opinion.
Yeah, and, and, and there's a place for-
You get what you pay for, right?
Yeah, but you look at it as-
Well, I mean, but it isn't always the cheapest way, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. No, and, and when we-
If there's twenty thousand differences, there's twenty thousand dollar value to have concrete over Blacktops at this point. Unless you can show me something different in that county.
At one point it was about a two to one. Two costs to one cost to go Whitetop. And as the price of oil escalated, then that's what made it extremely competitive. And if oil would come down, who knows? Our paving contractors may be real busy, uh, but we'll pick the best for Humboldt County at a time. And we have, uh, three years before we have to determine that, if not a little longer. Uh, but, uh, some of these roads, um, will hopefully, uh, can make her out three years. I'd like to tie that piece of Badger Blacktop on with all of this paving. But we'll see. That means that it holds up three years without putting an excessive amount of money in maintenance just to get there.
Don't some of the DOT asphalt roads weigh twenty-eighty? Are they just as good and comparable to the white?
Well, we're nine inches already.
Nine inches.
Uh, eight and a half to nine on all of these roads. So we're looking at, from here on out for paving in Humboldt County, most everything's got at least that kinda level. So we could probably mill out three and put four back in and only raises an inch.
So we don't have to shoulder so much.
Well, we, we have minimal shoulders on, on much of these already. I don't know. We have some opportunities, uh, and we'll see what the times, uh, what best fits it. We'll have to make that determination as soon as the middle of the summer or so for next year's paving. It's the what's, what's our best bang for the buck at the time.
Well, some of these roads, we have excessive truck traffic on it. Payment with, you know, the Blacktop just can't, it keeps cupping out so bad.
Don't know, we'll have this discussion, uh, whether we bid heads up again or what we do for next year. It depends on how the bids. We have the March letting this week, I believe. Uh, no, it might be the seventeenth. It's, it's either this Tuesday or next Tuesday. And we'll see what the pricing, uh, you know, see how paving projects are looking. On one hand, oil's going down and on the other hand, there might be more work.
Yeah, they could offset each other a little bit, maybe.
But there's a lot of paving contractors and, uh,
Okay. Any other discussion? We need to have a motion to authorize our county engineer to send in an application for regional surface transportation funding.
I'll make that motion for that awful.
Motion by Rick. Second by Moore. Other discussion? Anything else we need to know about this, Paul?
As they might start questioning, we, uh, we did, and, and I didn't fully explain it. We have to have a cost estimate, a certified cost estimate in there. And, uh, we more or less put this right at two hundred thousand, both of them, concrete and asphalt at this point. An adjacent county is using about two hundred and forty thousand a mile now for the asphalt side. Um, and they're considering a little PC or whatever. But, point is, it's my best guess and to not try to wet pit one against the other, we, we force them to be exactly equal right now on the ninth of, uh, March, uh, two thousand fifteen. Would, would bid be that today? No, we're trying to project what it would be. And if, if we're anywhere close to the price, then they need to give us an award by the time we get there.
The state that bids that, right?
Yeah, it would be, when, when the time comes, it's gotta be federal, it's gotta be bid at the state, it's gotta be through the state specs, it's gotta be da, 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 da. And then blessed and all it did and- We just went through a federal aid bridge audit and we finally got clearance to pay last week.
Good.
And by the time we got all the way done it, done with it, when we did interest calculations, I think we have three days of interest now because the contractor didn't get it within ninety days. But it wasn't anything we can do about it 'cause we're audited, can't release it until the DOT's done.
Okay, we have a motion before us to submit this application. Other discussion? Hang on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion aye. Motion carried. Anything else we need to know about, Paul? No, no?
Ah, yeah.
Soft roads?
Soft roads gonna be an issue, I imagine?
What, what we're trying to do, and I, I hope it's working this morning, is we are picking a couple of roads, uh, and trying to rock in a hurry this morning, uh, before we lose, uh, freezing temperatures. And we should have a little bottom for a while and we're trying to rock a couple of them anticipating EC sources use. Uh, because once, uh, I'm worried about soft spots later on in the week with any kinda trap on any part of the roads. And hopefully we have, uh, cooperative efforts from the farmers and the people moving grains, livestock and whatever on-
Will we blading any this morning?
On, yes, we, we will be blading but again, that'll even get tough. Probably by middle of the afternoon today, we'll probably be done. If we think we're doing more damage than we're doing good, we put them in the barn. Uh, and, uh, we'll ask for cooperation from people and, and we generally get, uh, very good cooperation from, uh, all the people using the vulnerable, soft, uh, roads this time of the year. In other words, if you have priced later corn, you don't need to haul it this week, maybe.
So how long will it take if we get those fifty, sixty degree days for, I mean, like my gravel road out there's got a nice crown on it. The only spot right now is where it goes down by the dredge dip there.
Right.
Trees on both sides. It's wet, but boy, once you come out on top, yeah.
Things are nice and dry, yeah.
We'll have to regrade that portion when we pave that road then, huh? Uh, no. No, uh, we maybe, and we talked about it this morning, uh, that, uh, uh, some of the roads might be fine. Uh, they're gonna weep and they're gonna, you're gonna see them pumping moisture and as long as we don't- moisture, and as long as we don't run into soft spots or heavy loads, they might go right through this because we have sustained hot.
Uh-huh, they got a week of good weather coming.
Uh, and, yep, the only thing that would be nice about Thursday or Friday, if we got about a fifty-five, sixty degree, half inch rain.
Sure.
If we're ordering weather, you just well order that, you know, you're at it, but, uh, on the good crowns and good gravel and in the absence of traffic, we'll be fine with the normal vehicles, but what we lose is the heavy loads, we'll take it out, we're in trouble.
How is your mouth with the power lines, hard coming towards the line, they back in really good shape?
Uh, I think they're pretty well caught up. They've paid, uh, all but a few of the trip permits, uh, the ten dollars a trip for the overload, uh, that's the only bills. They've paid in their current, on, on everything. Uh, I'm not sure what they're gonna do this...